Meeting of the City of Flemington's planning board to order January 27, 2020, 6:30. Call to order.
Patrick Ferllo.
Here.
Fred Frederick.
Here.
Hal Weiser.
Here.
Savage Church Cunningham.
Here.
John Souza. Carol, Carol Torriello.
Here.
How does Karen do?
Here.
Okay, section two, minutes of previous meeting, December 2, 2019.
The motion is accepted, second?
I have a motion to accept the minutes from December 2, 2019, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 3.0, plan submitted, 3.1, site plan approval for research drive lot 16.
So this is for a two-story commercial building sized roughly 16,000 square feet. It's for warehouse use and manufacturing use. And there will be 18 associated parking spots. And we have Viabel Mark Second.
At 6:30?
We have Mariando at 6:30, so you can do the topic.
6:45, you have a motion?
So moves, second.
Motion made to schedule research drive lot 16 for March 2, 2020, at 6:45. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 3.2, 412 West Street for site plan approval.
This is another one similar to the one that the board approved on Pleasant Street. Another residential, one sites, solar system, ground mounted.
You do that at 7 o'clock on March 2?
Yeah, so move 10-701.
Yep. And we'll, okay, so all those in favor of 7 o'clock for the site plan approval?
Aye.
For March 2? All those opposed? Motion carries. And 3.3, 412 West Street for the site plan, I mean for the special permit approval for the use. Paul, is that your motion?
Yeah, 701.
For 701? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Do we want to do the Baker Cadillac site, or are we waiting for Mr. Gannon?
I anticipated he was going to be here. I could see him, but he did make an email request. He did make an email request to schedule a site plan for the Baker Cadillac. It's an expansion to an existing use.
And given that we don't have a meeting in February, it would just be placed under plans submitted for scheduling anyway, so we can schedule it. Now. Is it only a site plan?
It's only a site plan and it's for an addition.
Okay. Because John won't be here, Tom won't be here, and we'll still be the, as long as it's not a super majority, because that would be the rest of us, so.
We need the address for the record.
It's Main Street. Main Street. I don't know the number. 495 Main Street. So we'll schedule Baker Cadillac for an expansion of an existing site at 495 Main Street for 3220 at 7:15. Who said someone's motion?
710.
I said 710.
Right, 710.
Alright, 710.
Thank you, Mary.
All those, and these are all basic stuff so far. All those in, what's that, something? Okay, Fred Paul, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 4.0, old business, 4.1, site plan modification for 133 National Street.
Okay, this is brought forward by an applicant who came and met conditions of approval that the planning board had set. Mr. Joseph DiNubio. And then after going through all of the conditions that the board had set, he decided that he would like to ask for another waiver. That waiver request is included in the packet. It's basically a waiver from sidewalks, the sidewalk requirement. And so if you look at the letter dated 31st, 2019, it's in there. He talks about how he meets the other requirements. He's meeting the landscape, he's meeting the lighting. But he wants a waiver from sidewalks.
It should be National Street.
So I would suggest it's a minor modification.
Uh, there is.
That's where they go, like. The other story?
He must want one? He's got some raiders.
I can't think of any, I can't think of any sidewalks on Nashville other than down by Athens Pizza and Chiffy Lou.
There's probably a sidewalk by the train. On that side.
Are we missing something on your request?
The requests.
Request in the December 31st, 2019 letters on the first page, the bottom of the page.
The bottom of the page says, the last part of that is therefore blah, and then the rest of the sentences, it's not there. It says sidewalks are not present on Nashville Street nearby the Jameson lots, majority of the length of the street, therefore blah. And then that's the end.
And that's.
There has to be more to that sentence? Second or last page?
No, it's not.
No, it's not. It's off the whole letter.
Oh, it looks like it didn't copy with it.
Just tell us what the rest of the sentence.
Okay, it says therefore construction of sidewalks on the site does not fit in with the adjacent existing conditions along Nashville Street. A waiver is requested for constructions of sidewalks on the site. And then he goes on to talk about how he met the traffic impact scene.
Okay, well, we need two motions. We need one that this is considered a minor modification to the project. Then we need a. Motion made by Paul, second by Patrick. All those in favor to consider this request of minor site plan modification?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, whether it's second.
I'm abstaining because I abstained when you were saying you didn't have a decision.
There isn't one. Yes.
Send it to site.
133 National Street?
I can't think of anything off my head, what's it next?
In front of the first building, but that's got nothing to do with that.
First building on Nashville Street?
Well, the first building after the one. The second building, this site is after that. There's no sidewalks there.
No. I'm just walking. There's no rednecks. It's just business driveway after business driveway.
Yes, so. It's not gonna happen but 50 feet sidewalk.
Yeah, but to go nowhere. So they feel safe walking from the diner.
It's not in the next. Okay.
I have to abstain.
I will move to brand this week.
And the sections quoted in the first paragraph of my letter.
That, and I'll second. Section 22-63.1, 4.3, 1.
Okay, on sidewalks. Motion made by Paul, sent by Fred. All those in favor of accepting the waiver?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Abstained.
Abstained by, so. New business, 5.19, 6.0, communications, 6.1, Brooks Pond subdivision, review of conditions of approval.
We have an applicant here. And we have a developer here. And we've met.
He's actually the applicant.
She said that!
Well, the engineer that represents the applicant and developer is here. And we looked at Brooks Pond Village and the conditions of approval. I believe what triggered this is in the building department, there's a new building permit as part of the development that is being requested. And before I sign off on any building permits, I'd like to make sure that all conditions of planning board approval have been soundified. So I went through the files and with Mr. Hammigan's assistance, we came up with a laundry list of approvals. And they're copied and they're in your packet. Starting in 2004, there's approvals. And there were more in 2016. And there is more recently, one in 2018. And the board has kind of got muddy because it seems like over the years, some of these are not even taken care of. And then some of these, I'll let the applicant explain too. He feels that he had some discussions with Brooks at City Hall. And I'm gonna let me speak.
So there's a list of conditions that were approved in the original approval in 19, in 2004. And it has to be evacuated by expectations. Various different planning directors chose to just, if a condition was completed, just delete. Come up with like a new, edited, broader conditions. Some of the conditions are like ongoing conditions. We'll see when we go over, but I just want to go over them and talk a little bit about them. Some of the records just don't seem to exist anymore over the time. It has been going on a long time. I figure 2004 is 15 years from now. So does everybody have the original list of conditions?
Yes.
As we talk about it a little bit, it becomes a self-explanatory. I, our goal is to just continue to get building permits and continue to build up the project. And some of them you'll understand are not, can't be done until we finish. Some could have been done and are, and some could have been done in reading the different people in the city. Beautiful thing about this is that, that our meeting, we motivated something to happen, which is to do with condition number one. So the applicant, this is a list of conditions dated March 26, 2004. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
Number one, the applicant shall provide engineering design for label installation of gravity sewer in Debbie Drive for all houses which can be served by gravity sewer or private sewer injector pumps through the proposed pond development system. The city alumnus shall be responsible for providing all of the materials. I can report that that did happen, and they did provide all the materials. The applicant shall not be responsible for private injector pumps or connections on private property. The applicant shall not be required to install, this is really key. The applicant shall not be required to install the gravity sewer in Debbie Drive until the city alumnus has accepted the sewer pump station to be installed within the project site. Real old stuff, but I'll explain it. So when we went forward, 2004 with this project, there was a desire for us to receive the sewage that could be coming off of Debbie Drive. When Debbie Drive was developed many years before, there had been a storm moratorium. And the developers at the time, I believe it was spore and drought, built the entire development on septic systems. And over the years, many of those septic systems weren't working very well. Many of them abutted the back of what is now Brooks Pond. And I had a vested interest in trying to fix those because they were overflowing onto the property. A bunch of different things happened, and we agreed to do this in cooperation. DP has a regulation that says that one private owner cannot pipe his sewage into another private owner's property. So the only way that we can legally take the Debbie Drive sewage is that into the private property is that the city of Leamester had to make the pump station and the lines in the development public. One of the things is that over the years, you know, I designed and built pump stations in various different developments. There's this private sort of spec or specification for a pump station. But then the public pump stations are much more robust to the tune of like a private station might cost $100,000, $150,000. And the public stations, $500,000 to $750,000. It's a much different system. We agreed to build that system and put all of the lines in. And at first, we were supposed to put the lines in the back of Debbie Drive to pick up the ones that were polluting around there. Then there was some discussion afterwards. If I was asked, I was asked to put it in Debbie Drive in the main street so that both sides of the street could have access to it. And I decided I would do that, and I did it. And the people who were on the lower side still wanted it in their backyard, so I did that. And then there were several other people on the left side who should go up to what Debbie Drive felt they were left out. And so what we did is we ran lines to them, and we did all of that work. And we've been working for many, many years to go through the process to get this system accepted as a public system. We weren't even supposed to start the public lines until the system, the pump station and its components were actually accepted publicly. But we did, and we worked on it. And then all of a sudden, some of those lines were in place, and people had failed septic systems. So the DPW came to me and said, you know, can this person connect? And I said, okay. But, you know, we gotta get this public component done. And if, and then, so I did it on an emergency basis, and it was one after another after another. And so really earnest from like 2015, 16, I really tried to do everything I could possibly do to get the DPW to finally accept the system. I have on my phone, this momentous thing I have, signed on 1/27/20 by the DPW director, as I've seen. And we will now finally be able to submit. But we've actually done all of condition one in advance of this, but that we finally wanted to accept it. Everything that has a pump station, so we have built, it's all inspected, everything's done. But it's condition number one.
That's, they just submitted that for approval or acceptance, right?
Well, we had a city acceptance.
Yeah. And that's just a city acceptance?
Yeah, the city.
There's two parts. First, we have to get the DPW to sign off saying that everything was built according to specifications, et cetera. Once we get that signed up on, then we can submit that to the city council for request for them to accept the pump station. We're at that stage now.
I mean, we can't guarantee.
No, 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 I'm just.
Oh, that's like, you're gonna unstop the dog. He's like, okay, really?
Don't choke. Get a new one of fame?
So this prevents, that's one of 19, so. Let's not do it.
Come on, he's not here, so let's go back.
That's the bottom line, I appreciate the acceptance.
The detail for the proposed being tie-in and existing sewer will also must be reviewed and approved by the DPW as evidenced by the fact that it's in an operational and is completed. That's part of the number one, okay? The app, now line number three.
Mute yourself!
He just can't believe it. The applicant shall provide maintained emergency vehicle, access road over proposed utility easement in Debbie Drive to the project site indicated on the site actual should be improved by two minutes concrete. Surface shall be maintained in a passable condition, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, so that is all the easement, it's, you could drive there and see it. It is not paved yet, but the reason it's not paved is that we haven't paved up to it. In other words, if you had a little access road, we're just getting there.
So it's paved to what point?
The building development hasn't been built out to where it's paved.
The building permit that we're working on now is in terms of where the pavement is.
So once those buildings are constructed, you drive by it.
Number four, assigned plan, no packing, fire lane signs submitted to the fire department review. This is a big one. We work with the fire department on each individual building. They come in and test the sprinklers, look at all the sprinkler plans, they decide what's going on, and they approve them on a building by building basis. So the question number four is that happens at each building? Any signs that are not permitted must be reviewed by, that's just an ongoing condition that always goes on. Leamester Fire Department always must review and approve the design of the proposed swing gate, which won't be put in until we do number three. And they will prove it. Alright, number seven.
Alright, yeah, we only have.
We went from six to 15.
Yeah, that's okay.
Six, yeah, so we don't have to.
Is that the list?
Oh, five, same thing. Five, that's 22.
It's on the other side.
The other side.
You go to 17.
Yeah, six to 15.
But you sure you have, it is paged or just?
I have it.
So we're gonna go to number seven.
Okay, go ahead.
The sewer pump design documentation due active information, that has to do with the sewer pump on number one. That's obviously been approved and signed by the city. That was provided petition for the acceptance of the sewer pump station, city of Leamester. Within 30 days of completion of the pump station. And we just got the letter today. The design documentation with the box cover, that was done decade ago.
Yeah, so that's the cover that we drive over for the.
To give.
That obviously that that was done.
The developer response was taking product to mitigate unpleasant odors.
I haven't complied with that one.
Have you remissed, does anybody here remember that?
Yeah, it was awful. No, because of the stuff that was bad.
No, no, it's my fault. I had not particularly good deal on common. I shellacked the entire site, and it was really bad. The fact that I was looking through the paperwork, I have all the newspaper articles brought back to me today. Anyways, so the worry was that every time I dig up something, that I might dig it up. But that's an ongoing thing, we've had no odor issues. Exterior lighting shall be applicable zoning, so that's correct. Okay, landscaping plan shall be submitted to the planning department staff to review part of commencement of site work. Landscaping should be provided within utilities, easement, all the emergency. It is, we believe we submitted it, we don't, she doesn't have a record. What?
It wasn't landscaping.
Do you guys have a thought?
We didn't do the original stuff, it was done by Fred Hamley, so it could have been.
Here's what we're asking is that we submit, most of the, excuse me, landscaping, but the, when we submit a plan, do we just submit the plan for the building landscaping on a building? There were all the.
Yeah, so when we go, like, next building, we're gonna take that building, we'll say, here's what we do for landscaping.
Yeah, that's right.
And then if you, if it's got, I mean, nobody lands it architect, I'd like to do that on the last one. But I want to hold up this one plan that we're doing. Okay, water flow test will be performed, adequate water supply and pressures available for the fire protection. Okay, so here it is. I have all this paperwork, but this is sort of funny. This happened on August 24, 2004. These are the type of documents, they're in, I have to find them and dig through them, you know? That's it. So this was, on March 26, we had, we got the condition and we completed that. That's the water flow test.
And the concern on that was to make sure that there was enough, because they just reworked, if you remember correctly, a lot of the water system back then. And they wanted to make sure that, that we didn't have to loop back through, when we did it, it looped back through Debbie Drive. But that's a high-low system, they had changed there.
So that you have enough pressure to run electrical systems on the third floor. And then the potable water provider, number 14, goes to the same one. Street sweeping, if you think about 2004, it's made sense, it only made any sense in the moment. Adjacent improved roadway to Central Street shall be performed during the construction on a daily basis, but as minimum once a week. Okay, so now we're way far away from Central Street. And the way we do this is that, and we have a, we have to fulfill sort of water quality standards anyways, but those federal covenant ones. So every time we open up another one, we could crush stone so that the tires, get the stuff off the thing. And they go through our home, so they're never gonna make it out to Central Street. So this condition of sweeping Central Street once a week.
But it was never an issue anywhere.
No, it hasn't.
No, that was when you were going for the first building, you were putting the road in the first building.
Maybe 15, you're just, okay. Written snow removal plan shall be submitted. We again assume that had been done, I'm trying to put my hands on it.
You have enough snow storage there.
If you can give me 90 days, I can, this.
Think about the central area where the, they have the concerts, they can wear.
Okay, so here's number 17, this is, this is the very, just a word, this is exciting. Number 17, the applicant shall make a contribution to the city of Leamester that shall represent the applicant's pro-rata share for all the costs that shall be incurred by the city and which are not reimbursed by any state or federal program or agency in connection with the engineering and redesign of the Willard Street, Central Street intersection, city redesign costs. Now, just saw on the same page, that's the lights at Willard and Central Street. The amount such contribution shall be made by the applicant shall be equal to the lesser of the sum of $75,000 or to the city redesign cost times a fraction, the numerator of which is the average of the morning and evening vehicles. Blah, 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 no, 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 no. These are not. You guys, hi, ABEN associates, they came up with a formula. And I was responsible to pay $30,000. Here's what happened. What was supposed to happen was like, for example, I'm not gonna mention any names, but other developers, National Development, everybody else who did a little bit, were supposed to kick in their pro-rata share. Things got sort of delayed. And I was contacted by the executive office in the city. And I was asked if I would front the entire $75,000 and that I would be reimbursed the $45,000 when the other developments came on market. And the reason they needed it was that they needed to finish the $75,000 of design stuff cost so they could apply and get the half a million dollar grant to rebuild the intersection. So I agreed to it, and I did it. And it was the end of it. I never heard that. I do have a very nice letter saying that I'm gonna get it. But, so I feel I fulfilled that requirement, and then the last, you know, but, and I, I don't know that I'll be, I'm gonna follow up planning director, she's gonna come up with a little J's back, and try to figure it out. You know, maybe there'll be somebody that will still chip back in, but it is what it is. So I was asked to do what I did. I feel I'm old, I do have a letter from Kate Kirchenbrooke saying, with the calculation, and I will get back the $45,000. And again, today, I sat in a pile of paperwork, going through stuff, looking for it, and we'll find it. You couldn't find it though, in your file, yeah. But ABEN was actually hired to do the analysis on all of the developments, so we'll find it. Okay, the applicant agreed to contribute $25,000, so 17, that's where, the applicant agreed to contribute $25,000 for the improvements of Fournier Field. I was kind of waiting for the $45,000. And the applicant agreed to contribute $100,000. And the applicant agreed to contribute a hundred thousand to its material purchase for the streetscape improvements, Central Street. So it's kind of a six and one after the zip, but what happened on nineteen was they, I was supposed to do the materials, which I did way over a hundred thousand. Those were all the sidewalks and the stone walls and everything, the grand curving on the other side of the street. From the, all the way from Grant Street, all the way down to where the bank is, the initials. But what happened was, it got re-investigated at the DPW to any cost that was from a contractor, subcontractor, police details, et cetera. And I went back in and I said, no, listen, I'm always supposed to be paying for the materials. But I paid for the materials and all subcontractors.
So you already have proof that you went over the hundred.
That's why when you go to the next series of.
Well, yeah, there's twenty-two, do we know which ones?
Alright, so then you go, this is addition by subtraction.
It's twenty-two on the next.
I wanna go to the November fourteenth.
It's twenty-sixteen.
Twenty-sixteen.
Yep.
I think it has to do with lot forty. So what happened here was, what they did was they just omitted anything that was already completed. So in other words, they went through, this, this exercise must have happened with the person who signed this one, which would be Kristen Keller. So she went through the original order of conditions and basically omitted any condition that already had been completed, and it was right off the other conditions.
So the ones that were in the other one though was like, sites been cleaned and released, the materials, materials and operated in ordinary fashion, that's a different one than this.
She added some.
That was new.
Okay, yeah.
So what happened was, a couple of things happened, was it was such a big long delay in the development, the people who live in Debbie Drive were getting a little bit intolerant of those trailers. And they said, you know, they're using it as a construction site, not as a construction site that's being worked on. So I had to move all the trailers and get all that stuff off, and then I put up the garages, I don't remember this, but, and I put everything in garages, so it was small. So there's a few things that were, she didn't keep the numbering the same. But you can see verbatim like the parking lane thing, pump station, the apple.
So, I mean, what would be the easiest thing on this would just be to have a list of everything that wasn't finished yet? Or that we don't agree on, or, you know, we.
Everybody agrees on it, so I wanna, so I, I skipped all the one, Florida Field one. I still wanted to do it, I still wanted.
What, the streets sweeping?
No, now I hate it in Florida Field, so what I believe is going to happen is that, I'm not, I'm not even suggesting it, but I believe that I'm gonna, I now have in my file, like I looked back, and so recreational department had come up with a couple of suggestions, a walking path around it, so what I need to know is I need to be given.
What they wanted to.
Something that they can do with the forty-five thousand. I would like cooperation when the planning department tried to recover the forty-five thousand. I'm not gonna make an additional on one or the other. If, for example, we don't recover it, that's still one of the points I have. What I would like the board to do is to just allow us to go forward where we are and then give us ninety days to come back and re-invest. We still have two, six or seven more buildings, the whole building plan is on, in other words, we're finally getting to the area where the egress is, and we're gonna wrap it up. My belief is that within the next twelve months, everything will be good. But this was a beautiful thing to get the pump station. It had been sitting there for.
For decades in the long term.
The pump station was operational when we first occupied the first building, so. Did you put, did you, was it you modded it or? And yet, like, no, it's after that meeting, all of a sudden, it happened.
It's good. Yeah, so why don't we just see like that?
It's a long story. It would be good to have a single list of conditions.
Yeah, but one list of conditions would be really good.
That would be helpful.
But, and then we just, which ones I already.
Alright, so here's what I would like to do, I wanna take that original list and then get, and then have that, and then I'm gonna take the sub-list.
See what, you know what's gonna happen.
And then there's a few add-ons.
Yep.
And I'll go through, like, some of the things, I am gonna come back to another planning meeting because I have a couple of modifications, mine modifications, like where I put the garage, some ancillary buildings. So we know you're not meeting.
So chair, how do we go?
So we, is there any chance to get on agenda, what's the deadline to get on the March agenda?
It's gonna be, there's a holiday, but.
March, well, March second, we're pretty.
Booked.
Booked down, we could do the fourteen sixteen to the sixteen.
Yeah, that'd be fine. So what would be the deadline if you guys are doing it for that meeting?
Is it the Thursday before?
Monday before.
The Monday before, so we.
Alright, so I'll make sure that I have a four.
The night before.
I will have a four to do with these conditions. And I will also have the modifications.
So should we schedule that then?
Yeah, that's right.
That would be great.
For the night.
Maybe first.
I mean, March sixteen, yeah, six thirty.
Does that, does that give you enough time, look, you have sixty days, it's supposed to ninety.
Well, it's sixty days.
Well, we're doing, we're doing internally is we're taking the plans that were done in twenty sixteen and updating them for some of these new changes, along with some of the changes that were made to the buildings, so we're kind of cleaning everything up, and then from that, so I could probably have those planned for the next week or so.
We're not adding or subtracting any buildings, but we are reconfiguring some of the dimensions of the buildings. And so we're, and we're trying, we're moving the units around a little bit.
So it'll be a modification of site plan, which will determine whether it's minor or major.
Yeah.
This is backward, every guy.
I suspect that.
Backward.
So we're doing a.
Yeah, in different areas.
March sixteen, the bad.
So my, my suggestion is, and I know, so if you take, and I, Pete, you've said this, if you take the original list's conditions and then you just put in what you've done, it's been like, you know, summary. Another kind of what you do with department head comments. Yeah, and then do the same.
Okay, they, I'm used to it.
Then do the same thing with Kristen's list, some of them are duplicative, so you just do the ones that are outstanding and then, and then just give us what you want, what modifications you want, and then. And then we'll put it under old, old business?
Yeah.
Or communications, whatever, and then we'll.
Well, no, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be buying modification of the site plan.
Okay.
So then we're.
Well, that's why, we're on the schedule for.
No, no, it's, it's one meeting, there's no subpoena, no hearing. So then at that point, we'll have the final conditions that could be applied to the entire project.
So if it's minor, we say it's minor.
But we'll put it under communications and we'll talk about it. If we determine it's, it's a major modification, we'll discuss that, but I anticipate it's going to be the minor at this point.
This is no additional. Some of the buildings.
Old business, and then we can do, we can go through this on the. But we need to do it on old business.
Okay.
So we have old business.
Old business.
Old business.
Yeah.
Just do it on old business, and then if it does prove to be a major, which we don't think it's gonna be done, it has to have the hearing, but other than that.
That's for both of. And you're still got a hearing, so it's.
It's right, right, information.
So, did you guys have, I think we should vote on that, and we'll schedule it for, you want it on for the ninth, for the, I mean, sixteen, no? Are you guys all set? I don't want to go work, interrupt.
As long as we're okay with the building permit that we're achieving now.
Yes, because we've, well, I mean, we don't have to give it, you just have to give my comments back to the buildings back there, right? So we approve. There's word on old communications, old conditions, there's gonna be done.
We feel, so I think, I think what she asked me is the board comfortable first signing off on this, on this.
You're okay with that?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna sign off on a building term.
You smell like a goat.
No, that won't, that won't be on G P.
And so you've got two segments here, you've got the minor qualification, and then you've got the conditions of approval. Are we gonna have those as, one is old business and one is communication, or you're gonna?
No, we'll put it.
Some of it has to do, it'll melt for example.
It's two thousand four, it's definitely old. Well, plus you gotta vote on the mod.
Yeah, I think submitting a lot of you saying, here's what we've done, there is no condition, and here's what remains.
And here's what it's like to modify.
Then you can say, okay, these twelve conditions remain with the project, and it applies to three phases.
I don't care if you guys wanna do it as.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
Let's, let's, let's open it on under old business. When you've gone through four planning directors, Mr. Provencey, it's considered old business.
So you think of it. Investigate on that.
What's that? I know. Okay, so is that Paul's motion?
Which one?
To.
Schedule it under old business.
March sixteenth.
March sixteenth, it doesn't need a time, it's under old business second? Then so, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Haney, we scheduled Baker Cadillac Main Street for March second at seven ten, is that right?
Yeah, that does.
We just figured because if you submitted it today, if we had a meeting on the first week, it would be under plan submitted, it would be, and then we have, there's a holiday, so the next.
We should have it to the, the planning office by the end of the week.
Perfect.
By Friday?
I'm thinking I should have it by Friday, do I have the architectural plan squared away?
Okay.
I should have it by Friday.
That's just an addition at the end.
Addition at the end.
That's right, so we figured we did that on.
It's an completely paved area, so there's nothing else to do.
So we did that under plan submitted, this is.
Very much.
Six point two.
Six point two, Leviter zoning ordinance book update, six point two point one, the planning board review of quotes received.
Alright, we put out for five quotes, we got two that. There's somewhat similar in what, well, one of them is for Monticrist Regional Planning Commission, and it's a very simple, straightforward proposal, you have a copy of it in front of you. And they have a format where they're willing to do all of the zoning amendments up to date for twenty-seven thirty-two. And then anytime the board would have an additional requirement, with, any time of the year, it doesn't have to be only in June. As we, on a rolling basis, they would charge us two hundred fifty dollars per amendment. Now, the other format that we've received is from a company called General Code, and I can pass it around, and I can email it out to you as well. It's a thirty-page, twenty-seven-page document as to their scope of services, and a lot of it is, items I don't know if we need or not. But in the nutshell, they wanna charge us one cost for the initial update of all of the zoning amendments that we have to date, and then they wanna charge us a fee of between nine hundred and twelve hundred dollars for a annual update. They're a lot more sophisticated, so you might want to, if you haven't gotten to look through that already, maybe you want time to do that.
What's your preference?
You know, it's nice.
Costs are pretty similar, right, so really.
Yeah, Monticrist Regional Planning Commission, they're right here. And, you know, I know, just to, just saying through the last application, staff changes. If we have someone that's local, that's here, and they have everything in their system, then we can go back to them a lot easier, I feel, than if we work with, because already with General Code, I was working with a Suzanne Owens, and now I'm working with a Carolina Yano, it's already a second person. And I just don't know that we need all of the bells and whistles that they're proposing. I don't know that we need to pay for all of that, it's double the cost.
Where's the motor?
I thought it was two hundred thousand.
Comes from the budget, I have to propose it in this year's budget. So we'll need a letter from the board saying, in support of it, saying we need this code update.
So do you need a, do you need a motion, or you're just having to, for our guidance to, so you can retract the letter?
It doesn't have to be a motion, it can be just a agreement.
I can find the lawyer if that's.
And I can write the letter saying why we need it, and then the chair can sign it.
I'm fine with that, Marjorie, they have the reputation.
I prefer them.
And, and it's what's nice is they're right down the road, I can drive over there, meet with them, first and foremost, we don't have to fly, we don't have to fly somebody in.
Where is the other company?
They have offices throughout the country, they have the closest one to us, I think that's it. The New England rep. Two minutes around. They have a five-one-eight area code.
So that's the new regional.
So I don't, five-one-eight. Yeah, I know they have like five offices.
We like my, put those documents together and.
I think they have a timeframe, I wish they could do it, it's only gonna take them twenty business days.
At least it's called alternative, but it's a much better solution.
Yeah, okay, next, okay.
Right? It's good, good.
So we can.
And then, and then what we can do is, we can see how good of a job, my suggestion is, we wait and see how they deal with this, and if we like the work, then we ask them to do the subdivision. And it's not gonna take all year, it's only gonna take, they're giving us twenty days.
Good, alright, sounds good. So we give you authority without voting informally to, to.
Okay.
You have to ask the, ask for the funds and the budget and then. Ask them accordingly. Okay, so six point three subdivision amendments proposed, six point three point one, planning board review of adding centralized mail delivery for new developments.
Okay, we've talked about this a number of times. At this point, the postmaster and I sat down together and we drafted language that ultimately the postmaster nods his head to, and then he gave it to his supervisor in Boston, and she approved of this language, and they were, they were actually quite thrilled, saying that we really hope, they said, well done, we appreciate Lancaster City Hall being on board with this amendment, is what she said, or what, excellent, yeah.
Well, and they also said the postal service said, they really enjoyed working with their, and it's, Boston thought it should be a moral for all.
Yes, they did say that, but we're hoping that, we're hoping that we can share this with other teams.
Legendary, I just.
So, I suggest, Elizabeth, and you've probably already taught us, when we have subdivisions that require centralized mailing, we can add them, not as a department head, but you know how you send them out? Department head? If only in favor of the plan.
They will get a comment, they will get a comment. Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Do we have, do we have the standard practice that's gonna look like, so we can see? It's gonna be in the truth, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What, minimal block? Well, I was saying, I don't see why. Oh, no, yeah.
Well, that would be an A and F, but.
Yeah, we talked about the, the number of units that should trigger, didn't we talk about that before?
That's up for discussion, we didn't not talk about that.
I thought we would mention. Well, as long as the postmaster. Like, let's say there's fifty units, you need more than one central subdivision.
I mean, they're gonna be involved, so.
Well, they're, you never know, we could have a four, I mean, first of all, I can't ever see a four lot or whatever subdivision, but if we have one, I still, I still think.
Put it in one place.
They may still want it, I still think the post, I think the, the postmaster still has the discretion to say, we still need it. I mean, we don't know, we don't know how long the row is gonna be, how long, if it's a cul-de-sac, how long it's gonna be with only four lots. I still think it should be part of the, and then they can file a waiver, they can file a waiver, like they're doing anything else.
That's right, I agree.
So more motion to adopt the language.
Do you like the language as it's written, the post office likes it?
So, just for the record, I'll read it quickly, U S Postal Service accommodation to all subdivisions of the city are required to abide by the following accommodation for U S postal delivery. One, centralized mail delivery, centralized delivery is required for all subdivisions of the city, although seeking subdivision approval, approval within the city are required to consult with the Lancaster postmaster to review placement of centralized delivery units. No approval will be granted by the planning board without a letter of approval from the postmaster regarding location of delivery units. This may include an element to number of units required, see, I mean, there's something there. This may include acknowledgement to number of units required, see, I mean, there's something there, location of unit placement and design of centralized units, two. Shall, all mail delivery units shall include a covered shelter designed acceptable by the postmaster, three. All mail units shall be accommodated by a pullout area to provide service, the float area shall be of the dimensions ten by thirty, this area is not is a no parking area for non-postal vehicles that shall be cleared by snow by eight during each snow occurrence. So I, yeah, I, if there's a motion to.
Accept, I move to accept, yeah.
Certainly.
I'll win.
Motion made by Paul, second by Sal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Six point three point two, review of updating sidewalk from four to five feet.
Um, this one, you originally said it was zoning, but it's actually under subdivision. Subdivision regulations, it's kind of a simple change. Um, the board had said that they want to require all sidewalks to be five feet width. Um, therefore, under section F point two, there's a simple elimination. You can add in sidewalks shall be not less than five feet in width on all city streets and eliminate the language collectors and four feet on minor streets.
I do, we accept that amendment.
Second. Who put into that amendment? We did? Yeah. We put into that amendment?
We did because we saw.
Verbally, the board is discussing.
We noticed there we had Robbman once prior.
Oh, yeah, but are we gonna save just, I mean, they say four feet minor, five feet.
We're gonna say five feet, period.
That can be tough on a minor street, this narrow to begin with.
Well, you can ask for a waiver.
Okay, works for me. I'm just saying.
And so I move to accept the language amendment.
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Six point four, zoning amendment discussion, set up subcommittee for review. Six point four point one floodplain.
Yeah, this is one we've talked about since September, um, but we haven't gotten a discussion about. I worked with Joy Duberall, she is a, um, the director of floodplain hazard mitigation program. She works out of Boston. She met with us and told us that there was language that, um, it's in effect whether we put it in our ordinance or not because um, the federal government trumps, you know, they trump us, yeah.
Trumps.
So, but it would be helpful and more informative to applicants and such if we actually included this language in our in our zoning ordinance because it, it is in effect and they can read it right there and as their.
Okay, I make a motion, that's it.
So we have to advert, this is zoning amendment.
Yeah, advertising.
I believe we have to advertise.
We have to file a petition, don't we?
So we have to submit a petition.
Okay, we advertise later on, we send it to the city council first.
Yeah, we have to submit a petition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Submit a petition.
Same thing with six point four point two.
Same thing. Yeah.
Okay, so we gotta submit to the city council.
Motion made by Fred.
Second.
So on behalf of the.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll have to draft a petition for that amendment.
Okay, I'll draft a petition.
Six point four point one amendment.
Yeah, we have to, we have to submit.
Alright, yeah, so six point, all those in favor for the floodplain petition to revise?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, uh, all those opposed? Motion carries. And six point four point two, do I have a motion to
Submit the petition.
Submit or submit a draft of petition for our review for the city council?
Normal. Second, there you go.
Motion made.
Oh, wait, wait, we're, you're getting ahead of yourself with the solar.
Why, no.
We don't have draft language yet, we have concepts and we need a subcommittee.
We have what?
We have concepts.
Okay, so we have draft language on the floodplain?
With the floodplain, we have the language.
That's the language, so with the solar, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the solar system, we have concepts and I've been working with Steve Coffrin, he's the gentleman who um, went through the process for residential
Yep.
On-site solar system. And he gave us, um, I put it in electronic packet, you can grab a copy of it in front of you. Um.
He's a resident.
He came in Friday, yeah, he's a resident, he's an engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, for solar.
And he's, he's willing to meet further on this to help me work, um, so there could be a subcommittee of just Tim and I and we could come up with the language and then we could bring it to the board if that's.
Okay.
That's it.
The board prefer.
Alright, yeah.
But.
Done.
It's underway.
Okay, alright, we don't need to vote on that, you can, you can do that and you can, uh, because it's gonna have to be a petition.
Okay. No.
You don't need to.
Six point five, twin cities rail trail correspondence.
This came out twice, um, it was directed to the chairs and I got, I was copying on it as well, um, I feel the whole board should see it. It was sent out twice, first time they sent it out, they didn't give us the map, so you've got duplicates here, almost two different letters, but they're pretty much the same. I believe there's there's a deadline, um, of February third to respond, so if there's any comments to this memo, um, it'd be good to gather at this meeting because we're stantuck.
Oh, it's attached to the soul.
Yeah.
Phase two is kind of bad.
It's quite, it's quite a few words.
Which one?
The bank. You know, people come up to me about what the rail trail.
Oh, you mean the one.
It's a complaint.
Parallel, yeah.
Yeah.
On Route twelve, yeah.
Yeah.
Corner of the light, huh?
I think that's being torn down.
I mean, it's a, does it look like it's, I mean, no, it's.
Yeah.
Five. It's not right now.
So that's part of the.
Well, the trail will be behind it, right? Because that's the one that comes up, let's see, Route twelve, yeah, that's.
I.
Can't, it's not. That's still stopping before the cemetery.
Well, I, I can't speak for the board, but I don't, I don't have any additional input.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm good with this, I mean, I don't pay attention to it, so I would say, but um, we hope your eyes are keeping a good feel on the blocks. So I have no input.
John, did you have anything?
No, there's not much we can do.
Yeah.
You gotta fill the letter, okay.
Okay.
He's gonna still be waiting for the train down by the corner near the station.
Down by the.
And they're gonna be coming by on bicycles and you see what's going on.
Eight point six.
Six point six, ethics, conflict of interest training.
Alright, before anybody runs out the door, I need you to sign, I, I believe I already have Fred's, I already have John's um, off and around, now the sign forms. Um, you've done this before, you know the drill, you've kind of watched a video and get your certificate.
Oh, so this is to say and you handed it to us and we want it, we have to.
There's, there's two steps, yeah, there's the.
I know.
Oh, Patrick completed it.
Well, he had to this year because he works for the state.
Patrick completed his, Carolyn.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
It's too late, it's time.
So I do the state one, two, and like.
I have a pepper name on it, um.
I don't, I do it twice a year.
You just need to stay.
Yeah, you, you're supposed to read the state.
Yeah.
But you're.
I just give it right.
Alright, let's move on, well, Pete's just, uh.
Same one, it's the same one.
Town, just print it out.
Elizabeth doing six point seven.
The same example.
Come on, Kate.
I'm right here, I'm right here.
Late for recommendation for city council petition twenty six dash twenty, Jeffrey, typical, ten registered voters to accept Austin Circle as a street in the city of Lexington.
We got correspondence from the D P W that's in your packet.
So is it, are they good with everything?
They are.
Kate, we're looking, we want to recommend approval.
Second.
All those in, uh, motion made second, who's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Six point eight, planning board recommendation for city council petition twenty seven, twenty seven dash twenty, that's finale and ten registered voters to expect, accept Massapaw Road as a street in the city of Lexington.
Same thing, you got, uh, of course, Martin D P W.
Motion to recommend. I mean, that's good with that, right?
And everything's good.
Recommend approval, motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Six point nine, planning board recommendation for city council petition twenty nine dash twenty, Jill A. Nataola to accept Sammaset and Candlewood Street
Now, this one, the.
Drive the city as a street in city of Lexington.
This one, the correspondence from D P W came a little later, so it wasn't in your original packet, it was included in your electronic packet and there's a copy in front of you. Um, but we ultimately did get a recommendation from the D P W.
I can't believe they recommend approval on that, so motion made to recommend.
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven point oh, the record is reported.
It's gonna cost him some money.
I have two things that I didn't mention yet. Um, one, um, we have a gentleman, we talked about this at the last meeting that the Monticentos Joint Regional Planning, the Monticentos Regional Planning Commission has a Monticentos Joint Transportation Committee and they need a member that doesn't have to be on the board to come forward and serve. And we have a gentleman who, um, off the record was nominated to be by a board member and then I met with him and he says he would like to serve and he's filled out the form with his information.
Okay.
And if the board wants to recommend him, I can have the chair.
Well, we would like to see who it is.
This is Peter Latches.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Peter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Done. Did he submit a resume with his application?
Good choice.
No, but the board already, uh.
He's fine.
Well, we know him, but still.
That didn't.
Yeah.
He's, well.
Good, good choice, he'll be, he'll be very interesting.
He was.
So if, if the board wants to sign that, then, um, I will submit it to the appropriate.
You're all prepared.
So I don't.
Set this bar.
At the sign?
About it.
No, and then the other thing is, um, another reminder, we got one previously, but I wanted to, to let everyone know on March twenty first is the citizens training collaborative program, it's Saturday.
It's at Holy Cross, right?
They have good food, it's at Holy Cross, it's not a long day, you start at nine, you end at like three.
Nine is really funny.
Um, a lot of good case law procedures, brush up on your old your old regulations. It's always a good refresher.
The second?
The twenty first, of March.
Twenty first.
We can take a big car pull over, we can all go down, I can fit.
I'm still thinking about it.
I can fit three people in my car.
Yeah, we have to.
I'll, I'll email you again.
I have to see what.
I, I have to.
So those are my two things.
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, second session, uh.
Uh, motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.